Please join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Any deletions, additions, or changes?
Move to a...
I have one small quibble. Just under Mayor Council Matters, the LAFCO appointment is going to be at the meeting April 20th, not 18, if we can just put that on the agenda, so that's it. Okay, so you have a motion, Terry?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, the agenda.
Okay, agenda. I thought I heard minutes. Alright, so motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, okay. Have an operating agenda, and first item up is a presentation and proclamation. This is the fun part of the agenda. And item A, which is a James L. Martin Award presentation to Public Works Director Randy Bro. And we have with us city manager from the city of San Mateo and former Public Works Director from Half Moon Bay and San Mateo, Larry, you've been around, Larry Patterson.
Been around. You make me sound like I can't hold a job.
No, no, no.
He was also on CCAG.
I was on CCAG, the first CCAG, that's right, I remember, right? Mayor Clark, members of the city council, Brisbane, I wanted to, I'm very, very happy to be here tonight. I am here representing Keith Cook, who is the president of the Public Works Officials Department of the League of California Cities, to present the James L. Martin Award for 2014, 2014. The James L. Martin Award was established to recognize excellence and dedication to the public works profession. And I think here in Brisbane, you have an outstanding example of what that really means. Your Public Works Director and I have served on a variety of committees throughout his entire term here at the city of Brisbane. We've served on CCAG, the TAC, we've served on stormwater committees, we've gone across the bay to meet with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I know that Randy has been very active with the Regional Water Association. And he has been an outstanding representative for the city of Brisbane in all of those pursuits. So, he has demonstrated that. In addition, he has served through the officers levels of the League of California Cities for the Public Works Officials Department, where he served recently as the president. He and I have served with the League's Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee over a number of years. And I can guarantee you that the meetings would not be the same without Randy being there to add some humor. Randy has also exhibited a commitment to the profession. He's been active in the American Public Works Association. He's been active here in the county with the City County Engineers Association. And he's been a great mentor. And one of the great examples is Matt Fabry, who was here with the city of Brisbane and now is overseeing the countywide stormwater program, which is an amazing and challenging position. So it's a, I think it's a compliment to Randy's ability to take a young engineer and help them form themselves into a, an important position and to serve the county very well. And Matt is doing that. The, the James L. Martin Award is presented on an annual basis. It does not have to be presented, but when there are deserving candidates, it is awarded on an annual basis. And for 2014, it's my pleasure to award or present the 2014 James L. Martin Award to Randy Bro of the city of Brisbane.
Alright. Before we give you a rebuttal on that, Randy, you also have a commendation for you tonight, and this is a surprise part of the agenda from Adrian Tissier's office and Legislative aide Anthony Valdez is here to present that, so.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. San Mateo County Supervisor Adrian Tissier wishes she can join you this evening. And semi on her behalf, she was pleased when she found out that Randy was being recognized by the California League of Cities. She told me to tell you that it's been a pleasure to work with Randy and that he is, he's a wealth of knowledge and San Mateo County is very fortunate to have them, representing them around the state. And so I'll read just really quickly, this commendation from the Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County, State of California, recognizes and applauds Randy for being presented with the James L. Martin Award by the League of California Cities for your outstanding performance as Director of the Brisbane Public Works Department. This award was established to recognize members of the public works profession who are leaders in their field. The board hereby expresses its deepest gratitude and adds sincere wishes for continued excellence and is signed by the entire Board of Supervisors.
Well, thank you. That's very nice, across the board to Supervisor Tissier and to Larry Patterson for taking time out of his day now that he's the busy city manager come down here. I've tried to laugh this award off a little bit as the, just being the oldest guy in the room that hadn't received the award yet. But clearly, I'm very humbled and I'm very flattered that my colleagues saw enough of me to do this. But there's always a couple of other events that occur that allow these sorts of things to happen. And really, one of them is the high caliber of staff we have here. Certainly, within the Public Works Department, I couldn't do this if I didn't have great people working for me. If I didn't have maintenance workers and team leaders and inspectors and engineers that I knew could handle me being gone a couple of days every now and then, and I think it's a real credit to the city that over the last 15 years, we've really been able to recruit some of the best of the best. And people that, it's acknowledged, as Larry pointed out, that occasionally people thank us on our recruiting and hiring and training abilities by stealing those people from us. Matt Fabry, of course, went down to CCAG. And Matt Lee is now a city engineer down at the city of San Carlos. So all people that had some rather humble beginnings here and are now off to bigger and better things. So I think that's certainly great. And really, I think the other big thing is the city itself recognizing the value of its participation in the League of Cities from having a city manager that encourages me to do that, from having a city council that encourages staff to do that. And I really think that's very, very fitting with Brisbane and with Brisbane's nature. Clark and I were driving to and from the Emergency Services Council meeting the other day. And we really remarked about how over the years, if you use a boxing analogy, Brisbane's kind of always punched above its weight. You know, for 4,000 people, we've always made a really big influence and we've done so many things right. And that's really consistent with the League of Cities and their mission and the ability to go in and to influence oftentimes well-intentioned, but not always fully thought out and develop legislation before it happens. So I'm very appreciative that you and that Clay allowed me to do that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. A lot of folks don't realize how much staff does outside of the city, too, you know. And I think this is just reflective of your appreciation. I know every staff person there, you know, maybe with the exception of Sergeant Mario there, who's on the police department. But you work in Daly City, too, so cross, cross, cross over to other cities that, you know, all of our staff works outside of the city and it's very much appreciated. And it really is reflective of your talent level. And so it's very much appreciated, Randy, with what you do and everybody else, so. Everybody else have anything?
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, I just want to congratulate Randy on his award. You know, Randy and I were working the Brisbane Health and Wellness 5K race on Saturday. And, you know, I always have a good time chatting with Randy about, you know, how to, you know, the things that he's doing and how to make Brisbane a better place. I mean, Randy, you know, Randy lives here. He really cares about the community. And of course, you know, his work, work shows. And, you know, another thing, I just, you know, it's a really cool opportunity when you're doing some kind of county, you know, like on a board or whatever. And, you know, and they mention your city engineer or your city manager. But they, I always get so many compliments for you, Randy, you know, with the work that you do. And yeah, it just isn't something that, that we all know about. It is definitely a countywide contribution that you make. So you're definitely well-deserved to have this award, so congratulations.
Yeah, well, I would second that, but I wanted to make my usual speech about how important public works is and how important high levels of competence in public works is. It's the old story that, you know, people see a fire and police and they're visible and they are sort of the most important services in many people's eyes until something happens. You know, like the sewer line clogging up or water not coming out of the faucet or the streets being totally congested, or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And then you realize that, you know, nothing works unless the basic infrastructure works. And that's what public works does. And it's an incredibly complex undertaking, even in a small town. And those of us who've, you know, had the tour of our facilities and even just the water resource system and the electronic complexity that's now in that and the chemical complexity to maintain the proper quality of water. I mean, there's just so many things that people don't think about. And I've said this before, I'll say it again, and it's something that you have to just keep reiterating. Because when we had this survey and we asked people about, what do you think about the fire and police and public works? And have you had contact with, the number of people who said they had no contact with public works was just sort of astounding because they just don't quite get that they're in contact with public works, you know, all the time. Every time they flush the toilet, they're, you know, I mean, all that stuff, somebody's got to make all that work. And so for, for public works and the leadership in public works to make all that happen seamlessly and for people not to notice shows that they're really doing something right. And so I really want to reinforce how important public works is and how lucky we are to reiterate what Randy said, to have Randy and the crew that he's put together.
And I just want to echo what Ray said. I was so impressed when I took my tour earlier this year of the water and sewer facilities. I had no idea how much complexity goes into our drinking water system. You know, public works, like Ray said, is, it's behind the scenes. It's something you don't realize and appreciate until something goes wrong. And to have, you know, our own public works department, our own drinking water supply with such a small population is really an accomplishment. And thank you, Randy, for your leadership in that.
Everyone has said the fabulous things about Randy. We're just glad he's here. Hope he doesn't get poached.
Yeah, Larry, you gotta, you do have an engineer, right, in San Mateo since you've now gone on to the city manager?
Right after I was appointed city manager, I got an email from your city manager saying that poaching Randy would mean he would chase me down to the end of the earth.
Okay.
So I took his hint, and I don't think we're doing that.
Okay. That's good to know. Good to see you, Larry.
Thanks.
Take care. Alright, thank you, Randy. Okay, item B, we have a proclamation proclaiming the week of April 20th through April 26th, the Week of West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of Brisbane. And I have a proclamation here. And also, we have one of our local representatives. Our only local representative who's going to receive this.
Dean.
Yeah. So let me go ahead and read this and then, and then Bob, I'll give this to you, hand this over to you. And Bob Maynard, of course, is our representative on the county, what's it called?
Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Yeah, mosquito and vector control, then. Okay, so this is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Brisbane proclaiming the week of April 20th through April 26th, 2014, as West Nile Virus and Mosquito Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of Brisbane. Whereas West Nile Virus is a mosquito-borne disease that in 2013 resulted in 14 human deaths in California and over 372 individuals in 31 counties tested positive for the virus, of which 240 developed neuroinvasive disease. And whereas inadequately funded mosquito control, disease surveillance, and public awareness programs are the best ways to prevent outbreaks of the West Nile Virus. And whereas professional mosquito control based on scientific research has made great advances in reducing mosquitoes and the diseases they transmit. And whereas the County, San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District works with other public health agencies to reduce pesticide risk to humans, animals, and the environment while protecting human health. And whereas West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of West Nile Virus and of the importance of integrated management in controlling mosquitoes and other vectors in San Mateo County. Now therefore be it resolved at the city of Brisbane that the week of April 20th through April 26th be designated West Nile Virus and Mosquito Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of Brisbane. And Bob, you want to take this?
Thank you. Give a quick update, if you like.
Yes, I'd like to. First, last time I was here, last fall, I mentioned a gyphti mosquito which had turned up in Menlo Park and the cemetery. And there was a big campaign on the part of the district to get rid of them. They thought that they had until March when one mosquito turned up. So now they're back to doing that. The... There are no people in San Mateo County right now with yellow fever, which that mosquito transmits. So we don't have any concerns about, about yellow fever at this time. However, a person with chikamunga disease did turn up in East Palo Alto a couple of weeks ago. And so we have a campaign against mosquitoes in East Palo Alto. And that's a disease that's also very serious, that comes from Africa, that's come up through Southern Europe and now is in the Caribbean and is spreading very rapidly. We have a big tick campaign going on the county parks. We've gone through 11 parks so far. Three of the parks had very high, high numbers of ticks with Lyme disease. San Mateo, I rather, San Bruno Mountain Park is still on the list to be done. But our personnel is really stretched right now in the district. It will be done. And there are four other parks that are being done. The... Anyway, we're very concerned about it. Last fall, we spent a lot of money on some new equipment for the lab. And the board was sort of skittish about spending that money. But now we're happy that we did because this particular equipment can enable us to analyze hundreds of ticks at a time. So... West Nile season seems to be starting early. There are a number of birds that have been picked up in Santa Clara County that were positive with West Nile. And finally, the common house mosquitoes are out early this year. So if you have standing water in your yards, please get rid of it, dump it. And if you have problems with lots of mosquitoes in your yard, call the district and they'll have somebody come out and try to find the source. One final note. A number of you know that there was a major fraud in our district two years ago. $530,000 was stolen, part of collusion between the county supervisor and the finance officer. They were finally convicted and sentenced at the end of February. This was very costly to the district and we're happy to be seeing the end of that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ray.
Do we have a public education sign program for Lyme disease?
The district has information about ticks and Lyme disease on their website.
Signs like in parks where the...
I don't believe that we do.
Would be within your realm, or would the parks have to do that, or what?
I think that the district would have to coordinate that with the park district.
So I'm just thinking, you know, people know that mosquitoes are nasty, but I'm not sure they necessarily know about, you know, ticks and Lyme disease and so forth.
Actually, it's been discovered that ticks also carry another very serious disease as well. I can talk to the district and see whether they're willing to do that.
Yeah, certain, certain parks that, that have ticks that are known to carry Lyme disease, they, they, they post signs.
Do they?
They do.
Do they? I haven't seen any myself.
I've seen it down at Nanyuueva and to check carefully when you enter into open space and reserve areas for ticks. And for most people, once you've been out hiking and had a tick and it's not that you don't know what that bite came from because the thing's still there and it's quite creepy to come home with things attached to you. I think that there is quite a bit of knowledge about ticks and Lyme disease. Not that we had historically as much Lyme disease as back east, but I think that, you know, once bitten by a tick, always wary of ticks.
Did you say there were three parks where there were ticks discovered?
Yes, that's correct.
Which ones were those?
You know, three with Lyme disease.
Or three with Lyme...
Three with lots of, with lots of ticks carrying Lyme disease.
Which parks are those?
Don't have them off the top of my head. I didn't bring the report with me, I'm sorry.
But obviously, one of them is not, among those three, is not San Bruno Mountain.
No, because we haven't done that. We haven't done that yet. That's correct.
But those ticks are easily associated with deer.
Yes, that's correct. So it's unlikely that we have a problem here.
That's correct.
Is that report available online? For people who would be interested?
I will check to see. I'll check with the district manager to see if that's the case.
Okay, any other questions?
Just the other thing, when you do do the San Bruno Mountain study, I think it'd be good for us to have it available to the public and maybe even put it on our website, etc.
Okay.
People would be interested in it.
Well, maybe we can have Bob come back and just do an update, too.
Okay.
And then, you know, and then we could have it available to the public because, you know, there's a lot of interest in that sort of thing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Alright. Item C, under Presentations and Proclamation, we receive information on annual weed abatement program. And Deputy Chief Johnson, I think, here.
Mayor Conway, council members, good evening. This evening, we want to present a little information for you on the 2014 weed wildfire and readiness activities in the city. We have three activities we've been doing for several years. The first of which is our annual residential weed abatement program. The letters for that program went out April 1st. And we will be conducting our first inspections on the 1st of May. That will determine how many people have voluntarily upfront cleared their property. If they have not cleared their property, they will have two things. They will receive this on their doorstep or on their, it's a door hanger, either on their own doors knob or on their gate. And then they will also receive a letter, a informal letter, not a certified letter, which reminds them that they have this to do. Additionally, they will give, that will give them until the 25th of May to clear their properties. On the 25th of May, we will go out and do our second inspection, at which time any properties that are in compliance from that original group will receive a second notice that they are in compliance with the ordinance. And the ones who are not in compliance will receive a certified letter, giving them 15 days to comply. After that 15 days, if they aren't in compliance, we will send them to an outside contractor to clear the property. That bill will then be sent to them through the city. If they fail to pay that bill, they will then, that bill will then be attached to their tax bill. Additionally, on the 16th of June, as is in the ordinance on the second council meeting of the month, any resident who feels that their property should not be covered by this weed abatement program has the opportunity to come before council and give their reasons for such removal from the program. And that is council's prerogative to do so or to uphold or deny their request. So that's the first thing we're going to do. They have over two months to clear their property. They will receive, in the written, at least three letters and one door hanger and then another door hanger if they are in compliance. The second thing we're going to do is our annual fire break and weed reduction program on the mountain in back of, in back of Kings and Trinity. Now, that program is going to start the 28th of April. And tomorrow, letters will be going out to all the residents along that stretch notifying that a CAL FIRE in cooperation with North County Fire will be doing that vegetation management program up there. We will be cutting by 100-foot swath there, not clear cutting, we'll just be knocking it down with weed whackers and hand tools. There may be some noise experienced. It will be in midday. So hopefully, it won't be too much of a annoyance to the residents up there. But we'll send this, I'd say this notice will go out tomorrow morning to all those residents. And the last thing we do every year is our annual wildfire plan awareness event that is in cooperation with the city, CAL FIRE, and also the city's disaster preparedness. Randy is out there. And that's going to happen either second or third Saturday of June. We're not sure yet. We have to confirm CAL FIRE's availability because we have CAL FIRE AFRAAS coming up. We usually try to get the helicopter in to practice their airdrops and to build coordination between our officers and the Cal Fire personnel so we coordinate very well. A familiarization for all of us, the area in Brisbane, the streets in Brisbane, the terrain on the hill, and so we have some kind of working knowledge of new, new officers in the district and new employees in the district, and we are familiar with each other and can work well together. So those are the three things that we are going to be doing this summer. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions? Terry?
We had talked earlier, and I just wanted to make this clear that everyone in the city of Brisbane gets the initial letter to make them aware of the fire danger and, and what the county is and the city is looking for as far as weed abatement.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. It is very specific as to what we are looking for, and it goes to all the residents, actually all the property owners, not the residents. And also, in all the notices that we send out, if it goes to your property and you're not the homeowner or the owner of the property, it refers them back to us. In all cases, we try to work with everybody and to assist them in accomplishing this. We're there to facilitate this happening. We always ask them to call back to the fire department, to the Fire Prevention Services Bureau, so we can assist and make sure that things get done in a timely manner. That's our goal, is to get it done completely and in without, with as little impact on them as possible.
Good. It's, it's, it's good to know because that you're going to be following up with a thank you that you've complied to anyone who gets that second letter. So everybody knows that, you know, they've done a good job and that they don't have to worry about whether or not they're compliant. So thanks for initiating that this year.
Good point, Terry. Anybody else? Okay, oh, Ray, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to bring up something that came up from a couple of residents last year. And you didn't specifically mention it, but I, I bet you're doing it. And then that was the concern from some residents that when they got the lack of compliance statement or concern from your inspectors, it wasn't clear to them in what ways they were out of compliance. Because there was no, no photograph or statement or what have you. And so they didn't quite know what to do. And so I think we talked about, you know, providing some information to residents who are not in compliance, you know, what the problem is.
Correct. Actually, on the correction tag, there's a check mark. It has some of the areas that they would need to be in compliance with. Furthermore, again, if they have any questions at all, call us, and we can clarify that and come out and show them if necessary.
The method they're going to use is to call, check on-
Check on the, on this hanger. It'll also be in the, in the letter that goes back to them. And then they can always call for clarification if they have some concerns.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Okay. That brings us to Oral Communications, number one. I have one slip from Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, I have four items. One is in response to the weed abatement. There is a very sensitive meadow right above Trinity, and I hope that they'll be very sensitive about that and have someone knowledgeable on hand to make sure that they don't weed whack the lupin that grows right above Trinity in that meadow that's very sensitive. So if you could have maybe a biologist or someone on hand that knows the plants so that we don't end up weed whacking our endangered species, that'd be really good. One of the reasons that we are having such a problem with mosquitoes this year and in general, is the decimation of the amphibian population in this area of California. There's somewhere, or down around 5% of the original population still existing, and that includes in Brisbane. And so I hope that as a city, we'll do everything that we can to maintain those urban waterways and frog habitats for natural mosquito abatement. This is not just a, a problem in Brisbane. It's an area-wide problem where frogs and amphibians have been greatly assaulted by use of herbicides, in particular Roundup and the other family of herbicides made by Monsanto. It prevents frog eggs from being able to hatch when it gets into the water, and it gets into the water no matter what. And they're finding that that is probably the number one cause of the decimation of amphibians and also the bee pop- collapse of the bee population. The next thing I want to complain about is the signal light timing at the, at the entrance to Brisbane. And I understand that we probably have it timed, you know, for an advantage for the traffic on, on Bay Shore and not for the people coming in and out of Brisbane. All of the other four major signal lights on, of the other three major signal lights along Old Bay Shore seem to be timed, you know, to respond to the actual traffic in place. Of course, the one at Van Waters and Rogers is lightning fast if you're coming out of Van Roger, and that was by plan because we wanted them to be here. The one at Crocker Industrial Park is very quick because, of course, there's the fire department there, and we don't want trucks idling going into Crocker Industrial Park. And the one at Guadalupe Canyon Parkway is pretty darn fast, too. And the one in central Brisbane, you can sit there for a minute and 45 seconds, which is the full cycle of the light, even if no one is coming in any direction. And I consider that to be kind of a problem. And it's been that way for a while, and I think it was adjusted that way to make us realize that we do need to change the general plan. But I think that it's, really should be not that way. I think it should be responsive the way the other signal lights are in Brisbane, and I kind of resent it that, you know, I mean, I know it's only a minute and 45 seconds, but life's short. And when there's nobody coming, and nobody coming, and nobody coming, and you're sitting there and sitting there and sitting there, even in the, in the evening, late in the evening, it, it seems kind of rude that it's not more responsive the way that the other signal lights are. So I, I wish we could look into that and get that fixed. And then the last thing that kind of upsets me is the last council meeting when we had the discussion about the property that Shinkai Bakery wants to purchase. That negotiation all went on behind closed doors, and then there was no public hearing scheduled at all. And Clark, I felt like you acted like you were doing us a favor to let us speak on it when that is something that really should come as a public hearing. It's public land. And I'm glad that you've decided to put this off and, and look into it more closely. But when something like that comes up, I, I think that the public should be allowed to participate in something as important as, as public land and the possibility of, of selling it. And so I felt a little bit like, really? You know, like, ah. And so while I do appreciate the privilege to be able to speak in front of the city council, I also think that the public's input is very important in those, in those issues. And I was, I was kind of appalled that it was ready to be passed without any public hearing whatsoever. And I noticed there's things on the agenda tonight, in particular, the soils processing, that does not have any public hearing attached to it. And yet I have serious comments about what I've read in the agreement. So I hope that you'll allow us to speak on that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle. Another slip here, Susan Maynard. Was I right about that, chief?
Yeah, it, it's, I just want to let you know that we hire, actually part of the cost is a biologist. It is part of the whole process of doing the annual clearing up there. So it's in conjunction with all the environmental standards and that, so.
Okay. Okay, Susan?
Arnold Mayor, City Council, I'm here to talk about Bike to Work Day. I'm Susan Sullivan Maynard, and a previous mayor roped me into volunteering at Bike to Work Day back in 2008, and I'm still at it.
Is that Mike on?
It was Michael Barnes.
No, there's the-
Is the microphone on?
Is the mic on?
You're just not quite close enough.
Is that better? Okay?
Okay.
Yes.
Speak up. All right. I'm here to talk about Bike to Work Day, and that's coming up on Thursday, May 8th. So just in two weeks. And why should Brisbane care about Bike to Work Day? Well, most people who stay within town and don't go east of Bay Shore really don't have an idea of the volume of cyclists that come down Tunnel Road. And it's mostly on Tunnel Road, but not necessarily. And it is a major event in the Bay Area, and a lot of people in town are not aware about it. City of Brisbane has done a lot of work with bicycling and bicycle issues. There's the bike lanes from border to border along Bay Shore. There's bicycle racks along Visitation. There's special bicycle parking underneath the ramp to the library so that if you're riding your bike to the community center, there's a place to put it out of the way so people don't trip on it. And the city also has been supporting Bike to Work Day with some, with great success. And I know at least two bicycle commuters are here in City Hall. The question is, why aren't there more? The memorable bicyclists that I've met during Bike to Work Day, well, first of all, there was John Quilter, who no, no longer lives in town. But when he was working, he rode the same bicycle for over three decades to work at Jaguar Motorparts. He didn't want to waste a car just on a commute. One of my first experiences was meeting a woman who said, oh, she was just a mom from the ridge, and her children had given her a bicycle for Mother's Day, and she was riding her five-day-old bike for Bike to Work Day. So you can start young, you can start new, you can, you can be a long-term commuter. It attracts all sorts. There was a piece on a scientist at Intermune who took the long way home. He gets on his bicycle and rides up and over Guadalupe, out to the coast, and then all the way into Central Marin from Brisbane. He loves it. He thinks it's the best part of his day. And one of the other great people that stopped was a cyclist who was still in his cross-country gear. He had just finished riding across the north of Africa and stopped in at Brisbane to say hello and say he was planning his next trip, maybe next year. He was doing the world literally on his bicycle. So if you can imagine 225 bicyclists an hour coming down Tunnel Road in one morning for Bike to Work Day. If they were cars, we would be shocked at the traffic. It would be just a mess. But a lot of people turn out and ride through Brisbane. They don't necessarily come into Brisbane, but they ride through Brisbane and continue on their ways north and south. Brisbane has, in statistics for San Mateo County, one of the most active Energizer stations for the county. But now that they're adding Energizer stations in east, south San Francisco, we're counting some of the same cyclists. So Brisbane might not be quite so outstanding in, in the county's statistics going further. So what I'm here to do is ask for two things. That people tune up their bike and get ready to ride for Bike to Work Day. Invite other people to come riding with you. And also, if you don't want to get on your bike, but you want to see something really phenomenal, come join us as volunteers at the Energizer stations. They're going to be in the same two places in Brisbane, Tunnel Road and Lagoon Road, and at Bay Shore at Old County Road, otherwise known as, as the Christmas tree lot that the Lions use. And we'll need people to count bicyclists, hand out Musset bags, which are like this. They're designed as if you were a, riding a professional road racer. You needed to pick up your lunch, so you can just grab it on the fly, sling it over your shoulder and go. The Commute.org provides the bags and the goodies inside. We need help with refreshments, and I'm getting those organized, and we'll have things put up. We need someone to keep an eye on the bike pump because there are people showing up with less than fully inflated tires. Take photographs, post, post to Facebook and to Twitter to spread the publicity of how great cycling is in, in Brisbane. And I'm organizing the volunteers, and I would be glad to give people my contact information if they want to come. I'd also like to request some time on a future agenda to discuss cycling and transit issues as it applies to Brisbane because over the years of, of working on Bike to Work Day and talking to other advocates for cycling, there are some major issues that the city should look at in terms of planning. Not the least of which is, of course, the Bayland plans coming up. But Brisbane is in a unique position to where we're caught between what San Francisco Bike Coalition and bicycle community is planning and what the Greater South Bay bicycle organizations are planning. And we're kind of not completely meshed with the other areas in the region. So.
Okay, thank you, Susan. That's May 8th.
May 8th.
All right.
We'll expect to see everybody on their bike.
Commute.org, and Cliff, I think you're on the Board of Directors for that, so.
Yeah, I am.
Yes.
Yeah, Susan and I had a little chat today, and yeah, I'm glad that you came to the meeting, Susan, and, and gave your presentation. And I hope, you know, Clay, that we can put something on the signboard, you know, mentioning that, that people could volunteer as well at our Energizer stations.
Very good.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, all right. Want to add one thing that- Well, I got, yeah, no, I don't have that. That would be nice. Sure. Thank you.
All right, you know, also Maria's part of the Traffic Relief Alliance, too, so.
Actually, she's on the Supervisory Committee, so.
So what I was gonna add was-
She is the supervisory committee.
She is.
That, the, the Complete Street Safety Committee, which the council set up and which Susan serves on, is charged with eventually coming up with a bicycle plan for Brisbane. I don't know whether you, I doubt that you've gotten around to starting that yet, but that is one of the hopes that the council has, that, you know, that committee will get around to doing that. And I know that we're committed to facilitating, and you can see what we did on Bay Shore. And the thing that worries me is that it seems like more bikers take tunnels than Bay Shore, which is a lot more dangerous, it would seem to me. So maybe that's kind of one of the things we need to address as to how do we improve, you know, the safety situation for, for bikers.
And, and that's one of the things that I'd like to come back to the council and talk about because the San Francisco Bike Maps send people out of San Francisco and down Tunnel Road. If you're familiar with Tunnel Road, you'll see that the charrows, the share the road insignia plant painted on the asphalt stops right at the train station, which is essentially the San Francisco City Line, and does not continue further down Tunnel Road. If you look at the Bike Maps for the South Bay, they send cyclists up Bay Shore and don't send them over to Tunnel Road. So you have two different bicycle organizations giving different directions to people who are riding and depending on that information. That's just the beginning of the issues involved. And Cliff and I have been attending meetings with the Geneva planning, the citizens' input for planning for what's going on with transportation issues concerning Candlestick Hunter's Point across to the Balboa Park Bart Station. Which is-
And next time, we should have this as a presentation, not in Oral Communications because usually we only give five minutes for that, and we're like way past it, so.
So if, if you would like to put it on the agenda, I'd like to come back and, and raise the issues as I see them and say, here are lots of questions and very few answers.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Anybody else who wish to speak? Thank you, Susan. Anybody else who wish to speak under Oral Communications?
I know it might be unusual, but I would like to mention something under Oral Communications and just as a public announcement about the Canyon Cleanup Day. Before everybody goes to bed or quits watching our meeting, I think that it is this weekend, and I urge everyone to check the city website to see how they can participate in the Canyon Cleanup Day.
Come on Saturday at 9:00 AM.
Saturday at 9:00 AM, Costanos Canyon, right? Okay. That's on Humboldt and Placer Way. Hey, anybody else? All right. I got your slip. Let's go to Consent Agenda. So anybody wish to remove anything?
I'd like to remove item E, the car show.
E?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to remove. That's what I wanted to remove.
Debut motion A through D.
So move.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, item E, Lori.
So I had some questions that I had asked city staff, and Caroline had looked into them about the, the postmaster, the, the post office, and perhaps Caroline can comment on that and speak generally.
Sure. So this is the downtown Brisbane Car Show that is currently being planned for July 12th, Saturday, July 12th. And the organizer of the car show, Brisbane resident Tony Lukasik, he had asked if he could use the post office's parking lot for parking car, cars at the car show this year. And I talked to the postmaster for the post office, and he said that he'd be fine with giving the spots to Mr. Lukasik to use as long as five spots are set aside for P.O. Box customers. So we're thinking the 45-degree angle spots on the side of the post office would be marked for P.O. Box customers only. And he thought that it was a great community relations event and wanted to support it with the other 13 spots in the post office. Are there any other questions? I can also provide just some background information about just, since the staff report was written that Mr. Lukasik would want to donate the proceeds of the car show, which last year was the inaugural year that he had the car show, and it brought in approximately $4,000. And he's hoping for the same turnout as last year, and from the feedback he's getting, he's already seeing that there's very interested entry, car show entrance that want to participate, and he'd like to donate half of the proceeds to the city for the skate park and also half to the Brisbane School District.
That's really nice.
Right.
Terry?
Um, I, I had a couple of questions because our staff report says that he wants to have a second car show this year, but it doesn't say when. Are you referring to this as the second car show?
Yeah, I was referring. Right, just the second that has ever taken place. Last year, but not the first.
Okay, because then it goes on saying he'd like to again. It just was confusing to, to the staff report as if this was, he wants two car shows approved or one.
Just one.
Okay. And then I'm unsure about the math, if they're charging $15 entry fee and had 130 cars, that's not $4,000, so are they doing alternative fundraising or selling other products?
Yeah, he also had the Mothers of Brisbane selling water and soda. He picked up some cases of water and soda from Costco, and the Mothers of Brisbane were helping to sell, I think, the soda and water for like a dollar each. And those proceeds were also going to the skate park last year.
Okay. It just makes it more of a community event than his, his event and that, that other groups are involved in the planning of it. And then on our fiscal impacts, you have none besides staff time, but it would be staff time. Have, have we looked at what that cost is?
For Public Works to close San Francisco Avenue, I'll turn to Randy. We haven't formally sat down to calculate what those costs would be. Sure.
I had one additional question.
Go ahead.
So with respect to the, the funds being donated, I, so last year, you had told me by email that it was split between BES and the skate park was slightly more going to BES, and you had just stated that this year it would be a 50-50 split. Is, is that right?
Right.
Okay. And the, the money for the skate park, how does that relate to the, the Tony Hawk Foundation? Is that the same funds that were received last year? Or, you know, what, what's the relationship there, if you know?
You mean, are they designated for design or are they designated only for building of the skate park?
Well, no, my, my understanding is that we, we have certain funds from this Tony Hawk Foundation, and it was unclear to me whether that was from this car show last year or something.
No, that was a grant.
Different Tony.
That we received.
Different Tony.
Oh, yeah. Tony Hawk.
Okay. So what were the funds last year that were donated for the skate park? What, what were they to be used for specifically for the skate park renovations or for just skate park maintenance?
I don't think it was designated for specifically a part of the project. It was just put into the donations for the skate park, a fund that was set up because we had received a couple donations from community members, and we needed to put those aside for skate park. So a fund was set up to do that.
And this would go into that same fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Anybody wish to make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, very good. Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to old business, which is consider approving donated photo for front cover of history book, select contest winner for back cover, and approve the addition of dedication page. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. Today we have before you a couple recommendations from the history sub, history book Subcommittee that we'd like to bring forward for your review and approval. The first issue is going over a decision on the front cover and also in connection with that, making decision in regard to the, the photo contest that we held this past winter. As you'll recall from our last meeting in February, we brought forward the pictures that were submitted for the photo contests, and unfortunately, there was not one that really stood out that, that you felt that was very appropriate to use as a front cover. At that time, you recommended that we go back to the Subcommittee to re-review the photos and the, the options for the cover of the history book. At the history Subcommittee, we reviewed it again. We decided that the one that we used as a mock-up, which was provided by Kevin Fryer, was one that we would like to pursue to use for the anniversary book cover. After discussion that I had with him, Mr. Fryer was willing to donate the photo to us rather than having to reopen the contest or do anything of that sort to cause any other issues in regard to it. So the Subcommittee would like to move forward with having that as the front cover of the history book. In order to also make good on our contest that we held this past winter, the Subcommittee also decided that they wanted to make a selection for the back cover of the history book. And with that, they made a selection of one of the photos that was a collage of stars that represented several different residences within Brisbane. I believe in your package you have a copy of it. If you'd like to see it, I have a couple copies with me here if you'd like to take a look at it. So just for, for a reminder, this is the one that Kevin Fryer provided for us that we are recommending to use for the front cover. We're recommending this photo that was submitted for the photo contest be used for the back cover at this time. So with that, I'd like to, I can answer any questions in regard to the cover issue, and then I can go on to the next issue regarding the history book.
Questions?
Yeah, I, I think they're good, good choices. I, I was just wondering, like, how would the text, would there be any text on the back?
No, there would be, there would not be any text on the back of the.
Okay. All right. That's another question.
Terry?
If the history Subcommittee has decided or recommended these, I'm happy to go along with their recommendation.
Lori?
I agree. I think, you know, I, I look back at the other photos, and because of the orientation, I think, you know, we, we needed one that was vertical as well, so that this one fit the bill, and I think, you know, it's, it's nice to have the stars since it is the, the city of stars in the title. And it'll be good to, to honor the contest and to, you know, have something eye-catching on the back, so. And my question would be is, if this is approved, at what point would we find out who the photographer is?
I think as soon as you make a decision on that, I can announce who it is.
You know, if, if, if I, if I may, you know, I just also, you know, Kevin Fryer's out there watching, I just want to thank him for donating the photo. Yeah, you know, you're a great, you know, contributor to our community in so many different ways, and, you know, it's, it's nice to, you know, have you, you know, offer this to the community and, you know, your, your work will be forever recognized, you know.
In perpetuity.
That's right.
Okay, Ray?
So could I move approval of the Subcommittee's recommendation on the pictures for the covers?
Absolutely.
Second?
Okay, we have motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good. Good point.
Thank you. So the second issue is also, the history Subcommittee, Subcommittee also discussed earlier about approving a dedication page for former mayor and council member Steve Waldo. As you know, Steve Waldo was an active member of the history Subcommittee up until the time that he left the council and prior to his passing in 2013. Due to the amount of work that he put into the creation of the history book, sitting on the committee providing a lot of background and information to help with those details with the, on the book, the Subcommittee thought it would be appropriate to dedicate the book to him. In your staff report, there is a copy of the text that, that was proposed for the dedication, and the Subcommittee would also like to request approval to add this one-page dedication into the history book along with his picture. With that, I'll answer any questions.
You know, I think it'd be a great honor to recognize Steve in this way, as well as his family, so I, I would make a motion to, to add the dedication page in Steve's honor.
Second. Anybody have any comments? We have motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Okay, and final thing, Lori, to answer your question, the collage of stars was submitted by Lee Pienza.
Lee?
We will notify him of winning the contest, as well as thanking all the other participants who entered their photos, and hopefully we can recognize them also in the city news as we go forward.
Yeah. There's, there's a certain poetic justice in this. We didn't know who had submitted what photos. It was a blind choice, but the original photo that we were trying to use, which turned out not to have high enough resolution, was also by Lee Pienza. So there's a certain poetic justice.
There you go.
Yeah, Lee, Lee actually spent 16 years of that, 25 years of that history on the council, so.
That's right.
It's weird. Okay. Thank you, Maria. Okay, that brings us to new business, which is item A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute the memorandum of agreement between the City of Brisbane and Sunquest Properties Incorporated for Continued Operations under Use Permit UP-8-03. Staff report, please.
Yeah. Mayor and Council, good evening. I'm David Kahn, the city attorney, and the issue before you tonight is a memorandum of agreement for the Brisbane Soil Processing Site. The city has issued multiple interim use permits for soap stockpiling and processing at the Bayland site since approximately 1977. Since 1977, there have been many major changes at the site, with substantial increases in both overall and individual heights of the dirt stockpiles and the total amount of dirt on the site. These changes have resulted in concern about the visual, environmental, and stormwater impacts at the site. The last interim use permit for the Bayland Soil Processing Site was UP-8-03, which was issued in 2004. At the time that that was issued in 2004, it was recognized that the site was to be used for interim stockpiling and resale of clean soils, and included a number of conditions, including height above the surrounding grade, limit, excuse me, limit on quantities of soil, and certain environmental protection measures. Prior to the expiration of interim use permit 8-003, the owner of the site made a timely application to the city to extend the permit or for a new permit. As a part of that application process, the city asked for certain information from the operator of the site at that time, and the operator at that time did not adequately respond to city requests for information. As a result of that, the property owner terminated the agreement with the operator and contracted with a new operator for the site, which is the current operator. As part of the ongoing application process for a new interim use permit, the new operator submitted a draft operations plan, which resulted in a number of additional questions by the city involving soil testing and regulating dust and stormwater. The property owner agreed to certain site management conditions and measures that were not required by interim use permit 8-03, and has been allowed to continue operations pending review of a new interim use permit by the city and Planning Commission, which is currently pending. In July of 2013, and I believe previously to that, a number of the city's residents raised concerns about both visual and operational issues at the Bayland Soil Processing and Recycling Sites. At that time, the council asked city staff to investigate the complaints and to develop a regulatory agreement, which we're calling a bridge between the, the expired UP-803 interim use permit, which is currently the interim authority, and the city's review and action on the new application for a new interim use permit before the Planning Commission. City staff and the council's Bayland Subcommittee has been working for several months on developing this memorandum of agreement, the one that is before you tonight. One of the primary goals was to incorporate recent environmental protections from the Regional Water Quality Control Board and others to establish objective height measurements for both existing conditions and future increases, and, as I mentioned, to incorporate those recent environmental protections into this MOA pending the review of the interim use permit. The memorandum of agreement that's before you tonight has a number of specific conditions that are intended to protect and provide regulatory authority and objective standards for the city going forward for the site. These include the adoption of the October 14th, 2013 Air and Dust Management Plan, which is incorporated by reference into the memorandum of agreement. The agreement requires that if there is any visible dust emissions that are crossing property lines, then whatever is causing those dust emissions must be shut down immediately, and mitigation best practices applied to the site to prevent the further emission of dust. There's a condition that there are no operations are allowed after 10:00 PM, and that's an absolute prohibition. That's something new based on concerns about late-night operations and the impacts of light and noise on, on residents. The operator agrees to comply with the September 2013 Soil Management and Quality Assurance Plan. I believe the council has a copy of that, and the city has the right to audit the site to ensure that the dirt that's come into the site remains clean and fill and meets environmental standards. A major concern was the objective measurement of the current heights of the dirt stockpiles based on the concern that in the existing interim use permit, there were no clear objective standards for determining where to measure from, how to measure, and how to determine whether the stockpiles, as they grew, exceeded what limits were, were placed on them. So as a condition of this memorandum of agreement, the city- condition of this memorandum of agreement, the city required that there be an aerial topographical survey that was flown. There had been an earlier topographical survey, but the concern was that that was not recent enough and that the heights had actually changed significantly. So it was re-flown at a fairly, I think the cost was about $20,000 to re-fly that aerial survey on February 21, 2014, to create this aerial topographical map that is the basis of future regulation in the MOA. And I think if we can switch to the next, sorry. We will, okay. So what you see on your computers and up on the screen is the topographical map. At this scale, it's fairly hard to see exactly what the contours are, but they indicate, based on mean sea level, what the current contours are of each of the areas on the Bayland's dirt site. What has occurred is that four of the areas have been identified as Area A, Area B, Area C, and Area D, and determinations have been made about the current elevations of each one of those areas above mean sea level, and then the proposed ability to expand the height of those piles going forward above mean sea level. So looking at it, pile number A, or area number A, currently is 51 feet above mean sea level, and would be permitted to go to 58 feet above mean sea level. Area B is existing at 50 feet and would remain at 50 feet. There would be no change to the area identified as Site B, or Area B. Area C is existing at 59 feet above mean sea level, and the proposal and the MOA would allow it to go up to 75 feet above mean sea level. Area D is existing at 72, and there would be three feet of additional height up to 75 feet. One of the questions, of course, is how to monitor the changing heights going forward. And so there's a requirement in the memorandum of agreement that every two months, there must be an engineer's report submitted that will identify what the current heights are, the elevations above mean sea level are, for each of the different areas to ensure compliance with those maximum limits. Although this is intended to be a bridge agreement, which will not be in effect past 2014, and that at some future point, the interim use permit will be reviewed and acted on by the city, there's also a provision that if for any event, this did continue into 2015, that there'd be the requirement for another aerial topographical survey one year from the approval of the MOA to verify through the aerial topography, the actual heights of the remaining areas. Other important points in the agreement are that the heights, as shown, are not the permanent elevations that are intended to be the permanent condition on the site. As has been discussed over the last several years, it's anticipated that if and when a development application is submitted and approved, it will include a final grading plan that will substantially reduce the heights that are currently shown, both the existing heights and any future heights, that that fill will eventually be exported off-site, used perhaps to cap some of the areas for remediation once there's a remedial action plan in place, and that the final grading on that site will again be substantially far lower than is currently shown on this interim use. However, the MOA does allow the heights to remain for the period of the interim use and until the next permit is approved. The council had several questions, and there are several edits to the memorandum of agreement based on council comments. First, I want to thank Mayor Conway for correcting a few properties where I think that either it's here or Y was left out, so we'll fix those in the final version. And then there were questions about not having a reference to above mean sea level in the height descriptions, and so we're going to add on page four, paragraph eight, where there is a description of the permitted heights, that all of those references refer to above mean sea level, so that there's no question that that is what the reference is. Exhibit A, which is what is up on the screen right now, is the topographical map. There are references in the MOA to the maximum heights in Exhibit A, and we noticed that because the Exhibit A that was attached to the staff report as originally distributed didn't have references to the actual height, current heights and maximum heights on Exhibit A, we're going to add a table and exhibit that will include those as part of Exhibit A, so that will also be clear. We also want to note that this applies only to the Brisbane soils processing, that there's a separate Brisbane recycling facility, which will be the subject of further review and possibly an additional agreement to limit the heights on that. But this is intended only to address the soil processing. So that is the, in fairly quick summary, the MOA that has been worked on extensively with input from the council Subcommittee, with concerns brought back from the Subcommittee and addressed with the owner of the property. It is intended to be an interim bridge until the review of the use permit at some point in the next probably six to nine months. And again, I want to emphasize that the intent is that if and when there is a development on that site, that those heights will be reduced as part of the final grading plan. That concludes the staff report. And with the assistance of the city manager, the public works director, and the community development director, we're happy to answer any questions.
Council questions. Let's go first. Cliff?
All right. Let's see. So David, you had talked about the other operation out there. It's on page two, the fifth paragraph, Brisbane Recycling. So when do you think that that operation will be before the city for a new permit?
I believe the intent is to resolve this issue with the Bayland Soil Processing and then turn the attention of staff to that operation. It is certainly smaller and maybe less complex, so without holding me to it, an estimate would be that it might be another two months before we're able to bring that to the council.
Okay. Are you aware of any dust control issues with that particular operation?
I turn to the public works director to answer that question.
Well, thank you very kindly.
My pleasure.
Actually, those piles do have sprinklers on the top of them, so they tend to be less problematic.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that. Let's see. On page three, I know it's also another location in the packet, the pile list. So maybe this is something that the Subcommittee can also address. How did you guys come up with these maximum elevations?
Very good question. And the way that those elevations were determined is that they represent the projection by the operator of the amount of capacity that's going to be needed to deal with the existing projects that are currently under contract for the operation. Initially, there had been a proposal to raise all of the heights substantially higher than is currently before you. And the staff and Subcommittee said, that really doesn't make any sense, because the idea is to limit it only to the very, very minimum required to accommodate whatever soil is going to be coming in from the existing projects, that if there are new projects, then it's anticipated that those would not be accepted without further review and approval, or possibly disapproval, by the council. So what they did was they went back, they projected the sort of the average amount of dirt that they know is going to be coming in through about the end of 2014, and then looked at, by raising those heights, what is it required, what's required to accommodate the cubic yardage for each of those amounts of dirt, and which are the piles that can be used, which would have the most impact. So the heights reflect a balancing of the accommodation of the dirt that they project to come in through the end of 2014, with not raising the heights above what that limit would be. And that's why there's difference, because they were adjusted to accommodate only the amount of dirt that is projected, and no more.
Okay. And so, you know, next to the year-end numbers it gives the existing, have these maximum elevation heights ever been higher than what currently exists? Do we have any of that kind of data? I'm just trying to see if, you know, have, you know, from historical information, have the heights ever been higher than what's being allowed?
I'm not sure I have an answer to that. I know that there has been, of course, a lot of dirt movement out there, that some piles, at some point in the past, have reached 75 feet. But whether it's the specific piles that are currently listed at maximum 75, or the other piles, I would have to probably check, have a quick conversation with one of the other directors here. So I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Because, you know, one of the things that, you know, that we've all been concerned about was that the height of the piles was one of the causes for not being able to control the dust. So based on these elevations, I guess the Subcommittee and staff, you felt very confident that certain mitigation measures could be implemented that would keep the dust under control while maintaining these heights?
That's correct. My understanding, based on the discussions with the engineers and the operator, is that these heights as proposed, and more particularly, the mitigation measures and control measures that are proposed, in terms of the best practices, the sprinkling, the operations should be hopefully effective in reducing or eliminating the fugitive dust emissions. To the extent that they're not, then there's a requirement that whatever activity is creating those dust emissions be shut down, and more aggressive practices applied until the dust emissions are under control.
All right. You know, in the memorandum that's dated August 19, at the bottom of the first page, you know, it talks about excessive stockpile height was alleged as a cause of dust generation, as excessive pile height occluded the application of water sufficient to prevent dust. So, you know, it talks about was alleged, but we have pretty solid evidence that that was actually the case.
Yep. I'll jump in on that for Dave. So no, sir, I wouldn't say that's the case. In my conversations out there with the representatives from Bay Area Air Quality Management District, their belief was that the primary cause of the dust at the time was truck traffic on the Central Road running north-south on the site, and that not keeping that watered was the problem. Typically, what you find is that when you've got a working pile, particularly the nature of the jobs these have, where things are coming out wet, those aren't the piles that are creating dust, because the soil is dry. There are occasions when you have piles that what you have to do is crust them. So sometimes you have to put a pretty good amount of water on top of them to get them so they develop a crust. They develop a little, you know, they turn the mud a little bit, and then they harden, and that stops the dust from forming. You can do that with applying certain additives. The preferred way is to do similar to the slope you're seeing, that's just to the east of Tunnel Avenue, we actually hydroseed it. But what we found is that, in consultation with AQMD, when we went out there and started requiring the operator to wet the roads down, that that was really the biggest thing that reduced the dust problem.
Now, you know, we did, we all received those photos of, that were taken from the windsurfers showing the piles and the dust plumes coming off those piles of dirt. So where does that all play into this?
And I would suggest to you, sir, that a large percentage of that dust was not coming from the Bayland site. It was actually coming from the Caltrans on-ramp, off-ramp site to Candlestick Park, which is a completely unvegetated area. And if you go out there during a windy condition, you see that that site is completely stirred up. So and that's not to say that the Bayland site doesn't have its challenges, but there are a number of different operations out there that are all contributing to the dust.
Okay. All right. So then, you know, just in this information here that we've received, I didn't see anything that said, that pointed to the piles of dirt contributing to the dust because of, you know, so am I reading this document correctly?
I don't understand your question.
You know, so, you know, when I was, I mean, I see this sentence talking about alleged.
Can you cite?
Oh, you know, just on page one of the memorandum.
Dated August 19?
August 19, yeah.
This is going through the history then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But that's not too far back, though. So we're putting forth, you know, some mitigation efforts to reduce the pollution impacts. But is there something from the Water Control Board that, or is it, no, the?
AQMD, the Air Quality Management District, sir.
Yes, Air Quality Management District, that states that the heights of the piles contributed to the dust issues?
As I said earlier, sir, that's not the air district's position.
Okay.
They don't believe that that's the root cause. They did participate in the development of the air and dust management plan, and a number of the components in there were inserted based on their requirements.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Okay. And then on page three of that document, in the top paragraph, it talks about hydroseeding portions of the site. So when they did some grading, and then when the rains came, we had these green hills. Is that part of the hydroseeding, or was that just kind of a natural occurrence?
That was primarily because it was hydroseeded, sir.
It was. Okay. And then in the conditions of approval, J7, so it says, a retention of natural vegetation shall be retained in areas not being actively worked, specifically including those areas along the central drainage canal and the perimeter of the property. So is there going to be some kind of vegetation plan that's submitted with the permit?
Yeah, yeah. If you're talking about the interim use permit, that's going to be a different application process than the bridge agreement that we're talking about, the memorandum of agreement this evening. So with the memorandum of agreement, there is no specific vegetation plan, because it's intended to be on a short-term basis. Certainly, that's a discussion that would be appropriately had at the time of consideration of any interim use permit going forward.
Okay, good. I'm glad that'd be the case. Yeah, because, you know, sometimes when, you know, you see this green hill, and then on the next day, there's, you know, they're moving some dirt, and the green hill is gone. So it'd be nice if there was some kind of notification to city engineer that, you know, that then the council could be notified about that. Okay. Let's see. You know, you talked about the engineered fill for the future Baylands development. So how far down are we talking about, as far as removing the soil that's there before it would be engineered? Are you talking about taking it down to the garbage level and then applying some kind of process to that?
That's another one where I'd look to probably the public works engineer, because I think his knowledge of how the grading plan and what's going to be removed is probably better than mine would be on that question.
So the landfill requirements for closure under current standards are relatively fixed, although with everything else, they become a moving target. Part of the challenge is going to be going to, is going to be go back and identify the existing conditions. The biggest thing that the regional board and that CalRecycle wants with landfill closure is they want to make sure that the soil above the dumped municipal solid waste is impermeable. The biggest problem you have in a landfill is if water migrates through what's supposed to be an impermeable cap, because then it interacts with any existing organic material that hasn't already degraded, and then it becomes leachate. So then you have a discharge problem with that, you have seepage-type issues. So I can't fully answer your question based on that, because we haven't gone back and examined all those conditions. There may be some existing maps out there that the property owner may have that give him an idea of where those elevations are. He's going to have to establish those. He's going to have to establish those, and he's going to have to go back and make a proposal to both CalRecycle, to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and to San Mateo County Environmental Health, which acts as the Combined Uniform Program Agency Manager for this area. Then the secondary piece that's going to come on top of that is what sort of development do they eventually get proposed there in different areas, and what sort of fill is required over that very specific area? For example, there's going to be a difference between an area such as a building, which will be placed on piles, that will be supported because the piles are embedded in bedrock. The differing condition would be an adjoining roadway that is not supported on piles. So there'll be different compaction conditions there, there'll be different sections that will be placed. So that doesn't give you a simple answer, but it just tells you there are some complexities and some questions that have to be answered first before we can go through and do a design and give you a detailed answer.
Okay. So it sounds like if, you know, if we did move forward with any type of development, significant amount of, of dirt would be removed before then being engineered properly?
On the order of millions of yards. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, you know, I just wanted to, to make a comment, you know, going back to a regular packet, it was, or actually the memorandum document on page four, and, you know, there was a couple of questions that were asked of us, and I, I think it'd be good to, you know, after we, you know, have our questions and you're from the public, you know, to talk about those things. You know, like heights and, you know, the visibility of the stockpiles and, you know, and there's a couple of other items that, that are part of that.
Okay. So, Dave?
That is it.
Okay. Terry?
Just to be clear, right now on this site, there is no impermeable, impermeable cap on this site, yet, that we know of.
That we know of, yes, ma'am.
And I have some concerns on the Exhibit A interim grading plan map. The site that is to the west of pile A is not mentioned or height restricted, and that has had recent grading as of in the last few days, and that's not showed as active or covered by this memorandum?
That's correct, ma'am. They're not supposed to have been working that site.
Yeah. For, for those areas that are not specifically identified as Area A, B, C, or D, the intent would be that there would be no further activity, no height increase on any of those areas. So if there, there were activity subsequent to the approval of the, the MOA on anything other than, than A, B, C, or D, that would be a violation of the conditions of the MOA.
Okay. And for reference, can we call that something pile E? And can I ask for the current height per the study of what pile E is?
Seventy-something feet, like 72, 73.
I'm going to reach out in the audience and see if Mr. Pearson knows the answer to that.
Evening, council members. I'm Howard Pearson with Universal Paragon. Unfortunately, I don't have a very good topo printout of what, what that shows there. That, that area I believe that you're talking about that is west of pile A, between pile A and Tunnel Avenue, is, I believe, in excess of 75 feet. So it was our intention of, we were not going to bring any more dirt into that site, that particular part of the site. What we were doing in, in the last few weeks is we were shaping it. We were actually lowering the top of it by, by moving dirt from the southern edge of that and shaping it so it would have a better appearance prior to us applying the hydroseed. And we, we thought that that was going to be a better product in, in the end run. So that's, that's the work that we've been doing. We haven't been importing any soils there for a couple of weeks now. So in, in the, the final version that you'll see in the interim use plan, we'll have those other areas identified other than these four piles, and it'll be a lot more specific as to what those areas, the, what activities will, will be on those. For instance, on the, the southeast corner of the site, that's our, our topsoil staging area, and it was our intent that these four piles.
That's pile B, Howard.
Pile D.
Pile B you're talking about?
Pile D is, is the, that's the, the final location of the area that is, the soil is for the, the Central Subway. And then on the southwest of that, that's our, our topsoil staging area between Lagoon and Tunnel, closer to, to the Kinder Morgan site. And so that'll, that'll be labeled on, on the final version. It'll, there'll be an exhibit that'll accompany the interim use, the operations plan. And so in this MOA, the, the four areas were identified strictly to, for maximum soil heights and, you know, so, so what we were going to be doing in the bridge between now and the end of the year. And that's why we didn't get specific about those, those other areas. If need be, we can, we can revise this document to show that additional information.
I still have staff questions, and, and Mr. Pearson may need to answer some of the questions if staff's not able to, but I'd like to direct them to staff and not to the representative.
No, he was just pulling everyone, so.
So the, you know, I, I would like for our exhibits to have the whole story and the other sites that we know what we're getting into, because I, you know, to say that no activity's taken place, you know, up until, or no new material up to two weeks ago, I don't think gives us a very accurate image of what's going on at the site because it's not like its ancient history. It appeared, so we're also looking at the other two sites that are on the tunnel, closer to Tunnel and to Lagoon, as having activity also. It's just sort of shielded from our view by some of the burms of existing soils that have been placed there. And I think that, you know, I would certainly be more comfortable with having an overview of the entire soils' storage area and knowing what their intention is and what we're going to be getting even before we, you know, just, even with just this bridge agreement. I also have concerns about the wording that this, these heights are only, you know, their intentions to the end of the year, and that after that, if we're still working on a permit or an interim use permit, that we're going to just keep growing, and again, we're not going to have any regulation on where the maximum is, or we're going to be considered that we're stopping their business practices. We, in the discussion, the staff statement says that, on page two, that their current, of the staff report, towards the bottom under discussion, the last sentence says that the requirements or what their plan is will significantly reduce future heights on the soil processing plant site, and it may reduce them. We don't know what contracts they have, and this wouldn't guarantee that they are going to move these piles anytime in the immediate, immediate future. I tend to disagree with some of the fugitive dust emissions that we've heard. I've seen the dirt blowing off of those piles, and I know there are other places that dust is coming from, but I've seen it, and my own specific history is that it, it appears to be coming from the, the soils' processing and the recycling facilities. So other than that, I'd like to hear from the committee members and any other questions that council members have from the staff or, and from the public.
Okay. Randy, are you, are you prepared to talk about Terry's question about overview of the entire site? Because I think that's a question that you're really want, or any, maybe not used.
Well, I, I'm not sure which part of it you'd like me to speak to specifically, but let me take a quick shot here, sir. I think one of the challenges we have, and I, I know that John Swickie has spoken to the council and to the planning commission on numerous occasions about this, is that the underlying agreement we have is very challenging, is very problematic to enforce. The proposed MOA is a giant step forward to having something that has the tools and mechanisms we need so we can actually get out there and do more enforcement than really what we've been doing primarily under grading permits and under requirements for NPTs, which are all part of our requirements from the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Municipal Regional Permit that we have. So my interest is in making sure that we have more control points that we can use, and I think this agreement does that. I don't know that any agreement is ever perfect, but this gives us more to work with and more ways to control and constrain the activities in there and to ensure they're being done to our satisfaction.
Okay.
I mean, I think in terms of Councilwoman O'Connell's specific question, I think we can work with the applicant and get a full description, a map with a full description of all activities, because I think that was what she was asking for. So I think we can, we can do that.
Yeah.
That, that is part of my concern. It's just that, you know, the, this bridge agreement would only protect us for half of the site. The other half of the site's not even mentioned. And I think that's going back to the poor enforcement that we had before, where we didn't have a ground zero, and obviously it was over 25 feet, but we didn't have a ground zero. And if we don't have the rest of the site written into this agreement, again, we only have enforcement on half of the site. And so I think that we would be making a mistake to not go in knowing what our agreement is.
Yeah. Councilmember O'Connell, I, I understand your concern. The, the intent of the MOA was to specify the specific areas where there would be the possibility of height changes. If it's not mentioned in the, in the MOA, then pending any further review of the interim use permit, there would not be any activity. And through, through the wording in the, the MOA, I believe that, that is covered, but we can certainly make that more explicit so that there's no question that we're focusing on the entire site and that for those areas where they're not called out, there would be no additional activity that would raise whatever the current elevations would be. Again, I, I believe that that, that is expressed in the MOA, but we can make it more explicit.
Well, I, and I'm sure you are much better at the legalese than I am, but, you know, on, on pile B, they've said 50 feet, no change in limit, 50 feet. That's not to say there's not going to be activity on that site. Things are going to be moving and things are going to be changing, and so we know that is still a working pile. But, you know, I just, if these are going to be working piles, then I think they need to be covered in the agreement, even if and not limited to height change.
You know, David, if you wouldn't mind, you know, if you get a chance just to find it in the MOA, that the other piles on the site would not be working piles, just so that, that's clear. Because I, I, I didn't see it in, in reading the document either.
If, if you look at, at page four, in the first paragraph, it says, "Maximum elevation shall not exceed those shown on Exhibit A." So the, the intent of including Exhibit A was to set through the, the ariotopographical survey, the current heights of everything that would be included on Exhibit A. So basically what that does is that, that limits everything to the existing topographical map, Exhibit A, current heights, except for those areas that are called out as allowing the additional increase. So that would be the basis for limiting it under, under Exhibit A.
So they're saying that the area where they have their topsoil, and I'm not sure, but the other unidentified closest to the Kinder Morgan facility, they're not going to be adding soil there?
That's correct. Under the, the agreement, that would not be occurring.
But I thought that's where they're storing their topsoil piles.
Topsoil's down in Area D, ma'am.
Howard, Howard, come on up.
Yeah, that area that is west of pile D, that is the staging area where there's some, some screens, and the topsoil has to be, it, put it through screens to get roots and various, all kinds of weird little things that come out of the soil. And then they, they potentially blend other soils together, sand sometimes if it's too much clay. And so that's, it'll, the screen itself will, will generate a pile because it, the conveyor, after, after you put the soil through the screen, it stacks it in, in, you know, off, off to the side. So as customers buy the topsoil, the, the pile that of finished product then gets removed and shipped off-site. So that area is really just kind of a staging area. So it, it moves up and down, but in the long run, it, it will reduce in size.
But that's an active area, and I think that's your point, right, Terry? So that's something we need to kind of look at, yes.
Be more explicit about.
Yeah.
Are you talking about pile B or the one west of, the unidentified one?
It's actually not marked.
It is, no.
Yeah, it's not marked on there, but it's south of pile C and west of pile D, I think.
In between Kinder Morgan and pile D. So it's not identified on the map we have, yeah.
So that's just probably something we need to identify as a work staging area for topsoil. All the questions you have, Terry?
Um.
I can come back to you.
Okay, that'd be fine, thank you.
Lori?
Sure, thank you. Okay. So I had a chance to visit the site today, which was very helpful. helpful. I'd encourage the other remaining council members who haven't seen it to do so, and that helped clarify a couple of things for me. First of all, one of my comments, which I thank the city attorney for addressing, is that the baseline elevation being sea level needs to be identified. I agree it's vague. And also to describe the elevations that correspond to Exhibit A and the topographic map. So, thank you for that. One of the things that I think might be helpful is, you know, the agreement references the air, dust, and management plan, which specifies the protocols for soil testing. And it doesn't, unlike the other agreement, it doesn't actually specify what those requirements are. And I think it would be helpful if there are any specific ones that are likely to be enforced that that be included in the memorandum of agreement. For instance, if there's any specific requirements about soil, you know, being tested offsite before it comes in, and what testing goes on once it, once it remains on site. Yes, I have seen the Soil Management and Quality Assurance Plan, and that's why I'm saying it's in here, but it's not in the memorandum of agreement. And
But it is incorporated.
It's incorporated, but there's the other agreement that's incorporated, which is actually called out. The specific provisions of it are called out, whereas this one is not. And so, that's why I had asked to review that document, because I couldn't tell by looking at the memorandum of agreement what these additional protocols that are not in the interim use permit were. So, that's my comment there. As other council members noted, the agreement, you know, it says in the staff report that the intent is that it would address the height elevations that are expected throughout the end of the year. But the agreement, and hopefully by then, the planning commission would make a determination on an interim use permit. But it doesn't say what happens if that does not occur by that time period. And I think it's important to say that the agreement remains in place so that people know that the elevations can't all of a sudden rise up above what's specified in the memorandum of agreement.
And just to address that quickly, the agreement, the MOA, doesn't have a term. Again, it's anticipated that it wouldn't be necessarily effective after the first of 2015, assuming that there is an interim use permit. But the limits that are set continue as long as this agreement is in place. If 2014 comes and ends, there would be no automatic extension, there'd be no increase, there'd be no possibility of exceeding these absent further review and council action that would increase those height limits.
Right. I understand that's the intent. I think it would be helpful to actually write that into the memorandum of agreement, that it continues in place, you know, until and unless further action is taken.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you. So, Terry had talked about this pile E, or, you know, the unknown pile that's west of, the unnamed pile, west of pile A. And it was explained to me today that, you know, as the representative mentioned today, that that's been hydroceded and it will remain in place, that the operator doesn't intend to make any changes in elevation. However, that and other, and other sites that are not A, B, C, or D are not mentioned in the memorandum of agreement. And I think it would be helpful to state that the other locations, you know, will not increase, no operations will be conducted, no activity that, which will increase the existing heights. Because there is concern that I'm hearing about, well, what about all these other piles, specifically the one that is over 75 feet in height already? The agreement only talks to piles A through D, so I think that it would be helpful to mention the other parts. And also, my question to staff is, even though those other parts of the site are not mentioned on Exhibit A, is it still, are they still included in the agreement in terms of the dust management requirements? And if not, if that's the case, can we clarify or specify that in the MOA?
Yes, the, both the dust management and the soil management agreements cover the entire site, and that is something that we need to clarify in the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And one of the things I learned at the tour today, the site visit, was that, you know, I had asked why, which is the same question that Cliff asked, why are there different height elevations that are expected for each of these piles? And the explanation I received was that pile B is to remain at 50 feet because that's where all the dirt initially comes, and it's sort of the staging area. And then from there, it moves on to piles A, C, or D. So, that won't be the same 50 feet of dirt. It will be constantly changing as dirt moves in and, you know, then moves to other parts of the site. And then I had asked about, you know, what are the plans for the dirt that's going to be piled up? Where is it going to go from here? And, you know, the explanation was that if, the plan was to potentially use it for the cap on the other side of the baylands, and perhaps the representative would like to talk to that. But I think it's important for the public to know, you know, where is this dirt coming from and what is it going to be used for? And what will the testing requirements be for any future uses?
Part of the package that you received, that you studied for the EIR, accompanying the specific plan, there was an infrastructure plan that goes into great detail as to what will be involved with the grading of the site. There is an exhibit that shows what we would have as a final grading plan. It had, there's an exhibit that shows the, through boreings and test pits that were dug throughout the site, to show the level of the municipal waste layer below. And there is actually a color-coded map that shows the depths of cuts and the depths of fills that would be placed on the west side. So, that information is all in that infrastructure plan. I don't have that with me. We could dig it out and present that another time and re-edit that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I was just going to say that the caveat is that that's a UPC proposal, but that has not been reviewed by the city. And that gives us some idea of what you have in mind, and that's helpful. But, you know, the whole grading plan for the development has not been developed at all, and I'll defer to the city engineer. But I think it's correct to say that that's something down the road, and nothing has been really established as of this point.
Absolutely correct, sir.
Thank you. And then the last comment I had was that, you know, with respect to the pile that has been hydroceded, you know, I'd like to have some assurance that that won't be changed, that that hydroceding would remain, or that there would be some other dust control that remains in place for that pile. Because it's not addressed in this agreement. Those are my comments. Questions?
Terry, do you have any more?
Well, you know, my other concern is that while we're considering this as a bridge, a bridge agreement, and I do think that there needs to be some regulations that are enforceable, it does worry me that we're talking about this as a six-month or a year plan or a bridge when we don't have a complete interim use permit application on file yet. So, we don't really know where the soils processing wants to end up, or what they're going to be asking for. And as with most permits, that if we don't act on a new request, the old request stays in force. And so, we need to live with that for, or could live with that for a long time. And as we've seen in some of the issues we've had in past permits, not necessarily on this project, you know, those can come back to haunt us if they're not done properly. And I think that this one in particular has haunted several of us because of the inadequacies in the original permit, because we didn't have an idea that it was going to go on for 20 years or for 10 years. And we still don't know if this is going to go on for two years, five years, or 20 years. So, I think we really need to look at that and make sure that we cover ourselves and make sure we get the best bridge agreement that may be something we live with for a lot longer than we'd think, and make sure that we get it right, or at least get it as right as we can make it for the moment.
Ray, do you have anything to add?
Lots of conversation, but that can come after the public mixed comments. But in terms of questions, just for clarity's sake, there are two very important documents that are incorporated in this agreement that we probably should hear a little bit about from the staff. There are two documents that are really the enforcement documents that count. And one is the air and dust management plan that's put together, you know, by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And I think some reference to, or some explanation as to what does that include, and that's all dealing with, you know, the dust control and hydroceding you mentioned and so forth. And the staff should at least review what's in that, because it's part of the agreement that we're being asked to approve. And also, there's a significant soil management and quality assurance plan. Both of these have previously been approved by the council, but they're being incorporated in this memorandum of agreement with the property owner. And so, this is really our proposed enforcement tools, and they're not in the, you know, the staff report that was distributed last week. So, I would request that the staff give a quick summary of what's in these two documents.
My colleagues are working anxiously at me, sir, so I guess I'll start. So, the air and dust management plan came about approximately five months ago, when we first started receiving concerns from a number of citizens about the dust on the site. And that was when we went out, we met on the site with AQMD representatives, we met with representatives of UPC Sunquest, and we required them to go forth and develop a draft document on this. And then when that document came back to us, city staff reviewed it concurrently with air quality management district staff. I was the person that collated the responses and sent it back to UPC and their consultants and required them to produce the final document that you see before you that's dated October 14. And the intent of that document is to prevent fugitive dust from leaving the site. That's the point, that's the primary point of air and dust control. So, that's what we're trying to do here. The challenges that we've had as we develop it is that you don't want dry dirt and having equipment driving over it, because that will stir it up if it doesn't have any crust on it. But unlike the perfect martini, which has the right mix of vodka and vermouth, there is no perfect mixture of dry dirt and water that gives you something that's satisfying across the entire spectrum, because what happens is it generates mud. So, that's part of the challenge that we're dealing with now. And for the council members that have been out to the site, you see that the operator has some fairly extensive attempts to get all the mud off the wheels. I think, my perception, and I'm not the trained air expert and air observer like the AQMD folks are, but it appears to be under much better control. But the challenge that I think we're continuing to struggle with is now stopping some mud from being migrated off the site. So, that's why when you, those of you who have been out in my truck have had your teeth rattled a little bit loose as we drive across the various rattle plates that are out there, as we drive across the various orange pieces, the six-inch minus riprap corgers that have been placed, the preliminary wheel washing that goes on, and then the final wheel washing that goes on with the system that's been installed out there. So, I think the dust control's in much better shape. We go out, my public works inspector goes out and expects it weekly. He provides that report to me, and I provide a copy of it to, actually, it's to Mr. Pierce who receives it, with notes about things that need to be fixed in accordance with the plan that they presented to us.
And Randy, the Soil Management and Quality Assurance Plan began, what, four years ago, five years ago?
I'm going to bounce that over to John. He's actually had the primary contact with CDM on that, sir.
That's correct. That's about when the, originally, when the application was filed with the prior operator, and the two key sort of informational requests were to provide really an operations plan to characterize what they do out there and how they do it. And then the other, how they ensure the quality of the soil that comes and goes from the site. And, you know, I think as the city attorney alluded to in the history, that when they got the new operator on board, that plan was actually prepared. The city hired a consultant, environmental consultant, who, again, reviewed that, made some suggestions and recommendations, also did an audit of some of their records, which got into their procedural kind of record-keeping. And those have been sort of codified in this version that you have in front of you, the September 2013 version that's referenced in the agreement. Again, this is a work that I would consider is going to be a fair game when the planning commission reviews it, because that'll be part of the interim use permit process, too. So, it may be that it gets modified through that planning commission review as well. I don't think this document is cast in stone. There may be modifications that need to be made at that point. The basic point of it, though, is to, requires pre-testing of material that gets brought into the site, testing by a state-certified laboratory. There are provisions made for certain kind of jobs that can't be pre-tested. They set a certain area on the site, do the testing before they co-mingle it with other materials, so they, again, keep it separate. But there is some provision for some material to be brought into the site prior to the testing being completed. I think the applicant can speak to those situations when they arise. It also sets sort of criteria of what kind of contaminants would be tested for based on where the fill's coming from, again, based on some EPA standards. There's other criteria in terms of sample, the number of samples that need to be taken based on the acreage of where the material's coming from or going to. So, again, those are sort of standards, along with the whole host of which contaminants are being tested for and what is the standard or the limit in terms of what they can accept or won't accept, based on the limits of these various potential contaminants. And that's all laid out in this report, or this quality assurance plan. The other thing that's kind of interesting about it, and it comes up, it's come up periodically and will come up again, is although they have a pretty good characterization of the materials that have come on since this plan was first implemented in 2010, you know, you have 30 years of material that's been brought on here, and frankly, without good analytical data behind it. And part of this plan actually does include protocols if they want to export material that's already been deposited over the years, the kind of testing they have to do it on an export basis as well. So, it's not only the import of material, but an export. And that would also apply to using the same material elsewhere on this site. They'd still be subject to those kind of analytical requirements, so you don't have this uncharacterized material just kind of being pushed around without people knowing what was in it and what its state is. So, that's kind of the real quick summary of the main goals of the plan. And again, it will be subject to full review as part of the interim use permit that's pending.
If I could just make one comment. I noticed that while the air and dust management plan is actually attached as an exhibit, Exhibit B, the soil management and quality assurance plan is not. It's only referenced as being on file, and I think that should be attached as well.
And that's a very good point, and we will incorporate both of them as exhibits into the MOA.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further council questions? Not hearing any. Okay. This is not a public hearing, but I do have a number of people who This is not a public hearing, but I do have a number of people who wish to speak on this. And the first slip I have is Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, and one of the people who have complained numerous times to the Bay Area Air Quality Management and about the soils processing that goes on. And, um, I read the documents and the first thing that came to mind, I didn't see these documents until tonight when I got here because they were not part of the attachments in the, um, thing. One of the things in this document though, or that I did notice, is all these charts in the back. These numbers are bogus. Those are not real num, the, the numbers did not print correctly. So I'd like to see a copy with the real numbers of all these different chemicals and, uh, and, and make sure that the real numbers are in it when you actually get them as part of the memorandum of agreement. We can't be too careful because I felt that the other agreement, the agreement that we made in 2003 really clearly stated that the height of the piles was not to exceed 25 feet from the surrounding area, which was clearly defined in the title as being Tunnel Road, Lagoon Way, Bay Shore Boulevard, and Beatty. And yet somehow or another, that's been perverted to like something that we can't quite identify. And yet during that time, the piles got to be over 75 feet high from mean sea level. Um, when I read this, I couldn't find mean sea level either. And I thought, okay, we still don't know the height from where. But, um, our astute councilors have pointed that out. Um, but there are some other problems in here that I saw when I read it. And in particular, if you go to, um, on page two, section two, um, of the memorandum of agreement, and it says, "The property owner acknowledges and agrees that pursuant to section 3.8, et cetera, et cetera, from soil disturbance activities is observed crossing the soil processing site boundary. The specific source of dust emissions will be immediately shut down in a more aggressive application, et cetera, et cetera." "Observed by whom? Reported by whom?" Um, I observe it, I call, but I'm not there all day. I have to go to work. So who's going to be observing the, the dirt? The same thing with section three, uh, "Soil Disturbance Activities Is Observed." I mean, who's watching it to make sure that it's observed? The public, a city agency? Uh, BBMQ doesn't have the resources to do that, and especially on the weekends because I've called on the weekends as well. And then in section four, it says, "Mitigate the dust. It will be implemented as soon as feasible." Well, does that mean like, you know, two days later if it's a weekend or whenever? And, um, then in section six, it says, "Does not, does not accept or process contaminated material." But I, I'm assuming that you're working on a plan and, and I'm not sure who pays for that. But, um, I just have a lot of questions about that. And then, um, it talks about in the dust plan, you know, watering and, and doing a lot of watering. But that's a lot of water to mitigate the dust. And who, where, what's the source of the water? Who pays for it? Please time me because Clark's getting impatient and I have a lot of issues here.
No, I get five minutes.
But there are also the conditions of the road.
Michelle, Michelle, hold on.
Uh huh.
Each person, I'm going to give five minutes too.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay. That's why I'm talking as fast as I can. But there's a lot of issues here that raise a lot of questions, Clark. There's the siltation of the bay, um, the report on the CHP from the trucks. Who's checking the soils? Who's counting the trucks? How much do we get per truck? How come there's not an EIR on this? I mean, this is a significant environmental impact. Why is there no EIR? Why are there no sequodoccums or anything else? Um, so I'm concerned that the, the, the top height right now, uh, these piles we're talking about in the, in the Exhibit A, it says the top height is 72 feet or 50 feet or whatever. But that's just the top height of the pile. You're allowing that entire pile to become that height. That is a tremendously huge amount of dirt. Tremendously huge amount of dirt. One of my great joys used to be when I would come home, um, drive home from work and, and I'd crest the hill and, and head down Old Bay Shore Freeway towards Brisbane. And, and I could smell the mountain. And, and that smell of the mountain is something that you can't smell anywhere else in the world. It was very distinct and you knew you were home. And now, when you smell, all you get is a mouthful of dirt. All you get is a mouthful of dirt. There's a constant pall hanging over the baylands when you come down the hill in the afternoons and you look at Brisbane. And you can't even see Brisbane the way you used to be able to or the mountain because there's just a big pile of dirt. You pull off the freeway and instead of seeing Brisbane and the mountain, you see a big pile of dirt that is only going to get bigger. What happened to the 25 feet that's now 75 feet? That's going to be the entire area covered in 75 feet of dirt eventually? This is, this is an issue. This is a quality of life issue. And it may be 20 years. And, and we talk about if and when it's built out. But with, what if the when it doesn't happen for another 20 years? Are we going to put up with 75, 100-foot piles of dirt for the next 20 years? That's disgusting. That's a quality of life issue. Why do we have to be San Francisco's dumping ground again? Uh, and, and I just don't think, I mean, I know it's nice to get truck fees, but is it really worth it? And who's counting the trucks? And how much are they getting for each truck? Is it worth $300,000 a year to put up with that amount of dirt, dust, health hazards? What about the windsurfers? What about the wind on the bay? There are all kinds of the issues. This should actually have an environmental impact review, but I don't see one. And, and there again, the problem of the interim use permit. The agreement we made in 2003 is still supposedly in play, but it's really obvious to everybody in this room that those dirt piles are higher than 25 feet from anywhere. So who's watching the hen house? The foxes? I mean, how did, how did this, how, how is this allowed to happen? And so, yeah, I want every single last T crossed, I dotted, sentence with a period on the end of it. Because whatever the intent is, I don't care. It needs to be written in the law, it needs to be written in the ordinance, it needs to be written in the agreements because it's subject to interpretation in the future. Just like the one in 2003 is subject to interpretation. It's only 25 feet from surrounding roads became 75 feet or more high. So, you know, no, I don't trust this process at all. I'm really quite upset about it. Thank you.
Michelle. Next slip I have is Molly Burke.
Good evening, council members. Molly Burke, Brisbane resident. I'm here to talk about the dirt pile that has reduced my property value because my view of the bay has been so significantly occluded. I have a hard time believing that the august members of this council have not been able to figure out how to measure 25 feet of dirt. I am concerned about dust mitigation, uh, from personal experience in, um, being part of a cancer cluster based on dust mitigation at a site over years of mitigation. I've had 25 of my personal friends die in the last two years as a result of a cancer cluster from dust mitigation, uh, procedures. I'm quite concerned about the drought and the amount of water that's being used for mitigating this dust and the rather, uh, casual reference to whatever else they're going to use to mitigate the dust, which is by definition and practice volatile, which means that it, whatever chemicals that they're choosing, they might choose to mitigate that dust, will travel on the prevailing winds like all the dirt on my living room tables and my bedroom nightstand. I don't want the children of Brisbane breathing that. I don't want more cancer to affect my neighbors and my friends. It's a big concern for me. I'm concerned that our city government doesn't seem to be agile enough or quick enough to have addressed this problem in what I consider to be a timely fashion, but has seemingly chosen to allow businesses to run roughshod over our small community. It's a great concern to me. I don't see a lot of, uh, action being taken. And I'm seeing, I, and watching the, the dais over here. I'm watching muttering under their breath, eye rolling. Mr. Brialt. Um, and, uh, it disturbs me. It disturbs me when people up from the community are speaking and they get that kind of response, obvious physical response from the people that our taxes are paying. Don't like it. Don't think it's appropriate. This issue is about more than money, I would hope. Thank you for listening to me.
And next slip I have is Jane Schaefer.
Distinguished council members, my name is Jane Schaefer. I'm Brisbane resident. And I just want to add my voice to Michelle's and Molly's. And I share all of their concerns. The only addition I have is I don't understand what benefit there is for Brisbane to even entertain an agreement to increase the piles and not reduce them. I, that, that has not been answered in all of the discussions that have just happened. What is the benefit to Brisbane? So, that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Dana Dilworth.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm, had hoped that this information would get across to you without, um, physically having to be here because my blood pressure is high this evening, as you might imagine. It is clear that this is an interim agreement of an interim use permit, which actually expired in 2007. City employees are not eligible to extend permits for interim uses. It's subject to the planning commission's recommendations and city council's approval. It's also a use whose environmental impacts were minimally considered in the final environmental impact report of Brisbane's 1994 general plan 20 years ago. A lot has happened since. Along these last seven years since its expiration, the city keeps allowing an unlicensed use which has impacts of blight, impacts to the health and welfare of the public, and an illegal filling of the lagoon and bay. Well, ju, the justification, and I'm quoting, "The city acknowledges the economic and," I will also question, "what, um, other community benefits of a, for a continued operation of the soil processing site." Problem is, is you haven't read the draft EIR for the baylands, uh, specific plan. Because in it, it states that there are some grave problems with this fill operation, that there have never been an assessment of the capacity of the land to continue to receive tons and tons and tons and tons and tons of material. This interim operation is actively forcing the toxins into the bay because it's created that pancake effect. And where are they going to go? They're going to squeeze out. Don't need to give high school zit lessons, but yes, it, it, it will go somewhere. It probably will not heal itself and we've waited a good 20 something years. There's no mention of studies that need to be done at the lagoon in east of 101. There are no mention of alternatives that could be considered. Um, and there should be some sequo evaluation. How many gallons of diesel fuel will it take to move this around? Now, later, a little bit later, and when, again, later? You should not approve this agreement. You should have performance standards and a, a bond for impacts and an assurance for the removal of the soil. If, originally, they claimed they were going to sell it. Where's, you know, there should be, um, a, a market for it. And if they leave the fill behind, as it might happen, we are stuck with Mount UPC. You should have fines for the dust issues, not just a, a promise that they'll do better. Or if they're violating, they need to be cited. You should require studies of the wildlife around the area in the lagoon and east of 101. You should acknowledge the citizens' complaints more than just leaving it up to Randy to help us beautify the baylands. 75 feet high is seven stories high on the south end. That's unacceptable. Our general plan says lower elevations, but I guess if it's soil, we ignore it? Discontinue this operation until you have guarantees that it will be removed. Do not allow the weak language of more aggressive application of BMPs or mitigation measures as soon as possible or feasible. Please consider the real cost of this operation, not the bone they throw our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Slip I have is Barbara Ebel.
Hi, uh, Barbara Ebel, uh, 349 San Bruno Avenue. Um, I, I'm also concerned about this issue. Um, having read the, number one, having read the DEIR, and I don't have the page number and, uh, measurements ahead of me, in front of me. I didn't have time to look them up. Um, but there is a specific setback from the lagoon and it's not being met. And if they take that pile D and they add to it, then we've got even more stuff that is in, within the, the, um, the clear zone around the lagoon that's going to be even higher. So first of all, that cannot happen. Um, second of all, I'm curious what they, if they did this aerial survey, we should know what the height of the road is now, right? And so, we know what the 25 feet from the height of the road is. So we should have some sort of idea how much they're not in, because we know they're not in compliance. But by now, with this aerial survey, we should be able to figure out how much they're not in compliance.
What road?
Um, I thought that, my understanding was that Tunnel Road was set as one of the original benchmarks, 25 feet from Tunnel Road. And not mean scene level, but that, that information is there, if, at least in approximation. We can tease it out. Um, third off, this agreement, I haven't been able to read it. I don't have that document in front of me. But just my, my, my sneaking suspicion is, is there isn't much in the way of teeth in it, all right? Because nobody likes to write down the, the what's going to happen if you misbehave. And unfortunately, I feel like any agreement without any real teeth in it is, is worthless. Because we've already seen that they're willing to exceed their given parameters, right? And so, if there isn't specific, meaningful punitive schedule for not doing what they're supposed to do, then, then it's just going to continue. And, and we can, we can say all the pretty things we want and it's not going to happen. Um, personally, I'm also, I would like to see the picture that was referred to from the windsurfers showing the dust piles um, coming off of the baylands. I'd like to see for myself, I'd like to see that picture as a member of this community to see if it really is coming off of something, if I can tell personally whether or not it's coming off, um, something at Candlestick Point coming off something at Candlestick Point or not. I understand it's subjective, but I would like to see that myself. And I'd also like to be supportive of the things the other members in this community have said, but those were some specific points I had wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I don't have any more slips for this item. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Greg?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I also live at 349 San Bruno Avenue. I didn't put in a slip because I usually trust my wife to say everything that I was going to say anyway, and she pretty much did. But I just want to emphasize some of her points. Dollars per feet per day. There's no point in having an agreement that doesn't have any teeth in it. And the teeth should be dollars per feet per day. You set the baseline, and you charge them for it. Just saying you're going to shut them down is like an injunction. It's so harsh that, you know, there's no real common ground, and they can fight. And then we have all of this backlash about, oh, we don't want the lawsuit, and we don't want to be bad neighbors. Just set it up front, dollars per feet per day. Now, what we've got out there right now is 75 feet. What we agreed to is about 25 feet. Tunnel Road is pretty close to zero. 75 feet, okay? If triple is okay, is 225 feet okay? Maybe dollars per feet per day needs to be nonlinear. And finally, I don't think that a dirt operation really benefits Brisbane. What does benefit Brisbane is remediation of the baylands. Perhaps they need some of this dirt to remediate. Let's figure out how much that is and try to not let it go too much above that. Very simple. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Anybody else? Okay. Counsel discussion.
Could we get some answers to some of the questions that were raised?
Yeah, actually, I have some specific questions, like particularly David, why isn't this requiring an environmental impact report?
Because this is an agreement to regulate what's an ongoing operation, and the interim use permit procedure is going to be subject to the environmental review. This, I mean, I'd have to take a look at the SEQA guidelines, but I think most likely this would not be considered a project for purposes of SEQA. There's also, there's a time issue because to do environmental review, if it was not an exempt project, would take much longer than it would take to get this agreement in place and actually be able to do some regulation. So it would defeat the purpose of having an interim bridge agreement to regulate the heights if there was going to be a much longer and extended period for environmental review. And again, that will take place. That will be in conjunction with the discretionary city action for the interim use permit. This is intended to be a regulatory agreement to provide some enforcement mechanism to the city.
Okay. No, no. Enforcement mechanism of it, I think the last speaker was talking about teeth, so to speak. What does this agreement do?
There is a couple of different mechanisms the city has to enforce the agreement if there's a violation of the height restrictions or the other conditions. There is, and it is certainly the most draconian, that would be revocation of the permit. Under Brisbane Municipal Code, Section 17.48, there's also specifically written in that any violation can be enforced under Chapter 17.58, Enforcement and Penalties. This is what allows monetary penalties. So this is a standard Brisbane enforcement mechanism that would be applicable to any violation of the conditions in the MOA. There's a graduated series of fines where it starts out, I believe, at $100, goes to 200, then 500 for the third, and each subsequent violation. And that, again, is the standard enforcement mechanism in the Brisbane code.
Can you hold, please? And then is there further than that, too? The grading?
Each, this would not be under the grading permit violation, but each day that there's a continuing violation, there would be an additional penalty that would be assessed. So after the third day, it would be $500, and it would be $500 a day for each violation going forward until it was corrected.
Okay. And there was a question about in regards to the water being used out there to mitigate the dust during the drought or during what being perceived as a drought. So we have an idea where that water's coming from or what's being used? And...
That site's served by the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, sir.
Uh-huh. Do we know how much water they use a day out there?
I don't have access to their meters.
Okay. So that's not coming from Brisbane, then, actually?
That's correct. It doesn't come from our allocation.
But it is hetch hatchy water, right?
That's, yes, it would be.
Somebody's, I don't think, I don't think we could answer about the piles up there that are being piled that, the higher the dirt's going, the heavier it is, it's squeezing toxins out into the bay. And is that something that's going to be reviewed during the EIR process? Or how are you going to look at that? And that, right now, is more of what's...
The EIR looked at baseline conditions, which would have been, you know, back in 2010, most likely, and then build-out conditions. I don't believe the EIR contemplated the ongoing operations of the interim use permit as part of the analysis window. Certainly, that's something that can be addressed as part of the interim use permit extension. A logical topic because then we'll have a quantity, a maximum quantity, that could be attributed to the site.
Yeah, I think it's a legitimate question, something to be looked at in the EIR. So really, a lot of it's just, folks don't want the business out there. They don't want the piles there. And 75 feet is certainly much larger than 25 feet. And I guess the problem was at the beginning of 25 feet, we really didn't have an identifiable spot because the way it was written was kind of vague. But now we're just going from mean sea level, 75 feet. I know that pile D is identified as 72 feet, but from what I understand, there's a multitude of piles out there. It's not leveled off, and at the highest peak is 72 and probably drops down to 50 or 45 or something like that. And so we're talking height, we're talking flat, overall height of that site, right? Counsel discussion.
I mean, they...